We're back in our regular session. We're gonna go, we're gonna jump around the agenda tonight. We're gonna do New Business Five, discussion and vote on special act petition to correct notice posting issue with the MBTA Community zoning by law. Okay, who's gonna, are we gonna speak on this, or?
I would be delighted.
All right, so I'll be brief. The town voted to adopt an amendment to the zoning by law at the annual town meeting to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. So we adopted an overlay district covering two areas that would comply with the MBTA Communities Act. Zoning by law has a number of procedural steps you have to comply with before getting to town meeting, and we comply with all of them except for one, which was not the newspaper ad running 14 days in advance, but the posting in-town hall that had to also be posted 14 days in advance of the planning board's public hearing on the zoning amendment. So with that deficiency, the Attorney General's office, which is set to approve this by law and complete the whole process, can't proceed with an approval until we remedy the situation. And the cleanest way to do that is with what's before you, which is a special act that this board would authorize the governor's office to introduce to the legislature. And it would essentially be a special act that says, notwithstanding the procedural deficiencies, the bylaws adopted at the annual town meeting are consistent with state law. So just be a majority vote of the board, authorize that petition, and then the manager's office and I can take it from there. I believe there's already been discussion with the state delegation. They know that it may be coming, and they're ready to move it through.
I can make the motion to have a special act petition to correct this posting issue with the MBTA Communities zoning by law.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah, let's get a second for some for discussion. Okay, go ahead, Nick.
Just a quick question, does this have to pass both chambers of, so the House and Senate? I just want to clarify that.
Yes, to the chair, that's correct. Pass both the House and Senate by two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll do a roll call, I got a motion in a second. Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night, Brian, thank you again.
All right, guest presentation, introduction to Unitil, Alec Omira, Director of External Affairs, and Joe Connolly, Director of Supply, who is leading Aquarian integration efforts. I'm guessing you're on Zoom.
We are on Zoom, can you hear me okay?
Yep, yes, we can.
All right, very good. Good evening, we'll start there. My name is Alec Omira, I'm the Director of External Affairs at Unitil. What that means is that my team manages a lot of the touchpoints for a lot of public-facing activities for Unitil, including our relationships with all of our municipal partners. Joining me here remotely is Joe Caneely, who's leading integration efforts for our recent purchase of Aquarian in New Hampshire and Massachusetts, as well as Arianna McNeil, a municipal and community services executive with Unitil, and John Walsh of Aquarian. And we asked to come by effectively just to introduce ourselves as Unitil. You may have seen or heard the news regarding the recent purchase of Aquarian, wanted to talk about, a little bit about what that means, which is really not that much is changing, and just sort of give you guys the opportunity to meet us and ask any questions that you might have. I believe we shared a couple slides, I don't know if you are bringing those up on the screen or not, if not, that's okay, I can just talk extemporaneously on them, and Joe will tell me if I get anything wrong, but just not sure how the operations are here. Are you folks able to see?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we have them on our iPad.
You have them up on your iPad, very good, okay. Then I'll just, I'll just talk to what you're seeing, and I'll tell you when to move the slides, and we'll go from memory, we'll see how we do it here. So the very first slide that you folks are looking at, the first slide with the map, this is what Unitil's current footprint is. And what I'm gonna do with this presentation, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we are and who we are, and then kind of try and outline what this transaction is and where things stand right now, and then we'll try and answer any questions you might have. But Unitil is a gas and electric utility, we're headquartered in Hampton, New Hampshire, right on the coast. We have about 200,000 customers altogether right now, that's split pretty evenly between natural gas and electric customers. Our electric service is in two states, that's New Hampshire and Massachusetts, our gas service is in three states. We are independently owned, there is no parent company above Unitil. We've been in operation since the 1980s, that's when three small utilities in New Hampshire and Massachusetts started sharing services, and that shared services ultimately became Unitil. And from there, we've slowly grown and added additional utilities here and there, primarily up in Maine. And that's gotten us to where we are right now. That's who we are, or rather, what we are. If you turn to the next slide, that talks a little bit about who we are, what we kind of believe as a company. We have the highest customer service rating among utilities in the Northeast. We are among the highest nationally as well. That's hard to do for a utility in the Northeast. Utilities in the Northeast have a lot of challenges that you don't see in other parts of the country, the cost of energy being one of them, the number of storms that impact our region, which have an effect on restoration efforts. So this is a real point of pride for us, not just for the fact that we have it, but also the places where we rate it very highly. And if, there's sort of a through line for that point, and that is that we really take pride in being of service to our customers. We want to have them know that when they reach out to us, they're talking to a human being, they're getting what they need from us, and sort of organizationally, that's a big part of what we believe. We take a lot of pride in providing essential services to our customers for things that they just need every, every day of their life, and we want to be doing that in a manner that they know it's gonna happen reliably, they know it's gonna happen safely. And if they have any questions, if they want to know what's going on in the industry around them, they know that we have services either on our website, or from our customer service team, or on our social media channels, they're gonna be able to find either the answer to the question they're looking for, or they're gonna find a resource that's gonna help them find a person that's going to be able to have those resources. So that's really kind of core to our philosophy and why we're very excited about this opportunity. So if you go to the third slide we have, that's going to try and outline a little bit about why we're doing this in the first place. So if you look at this slide, that includes where the Aquarian water assets are in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts. We see a lot of overlap for us in terms of where we are, we have very good relationships with the regulators in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts, we feel like that's going to be an opportunity for us to just sort of further and strengthen those relationships with this. What's effectively happening here is that Aquarian, which has been previously owned by Eversource, is selling the entirety of Aquarian, which is mostly situated in Connecticut, to a quasi-public authority within the state of Connecticut. As part of that sale, the assets of Aquarian that aren't in Connecticut, which are the handful of towns in Massachusetts and in New Hampshire, which you see here, don't necessarily fit that puzzle. So we are purchasing those specific, very narrow portion of Aquarian, and looking to add that to the Unitil business as a whole. As part of that agreement, Unitil has an understanding that for five years, nothing is changing in terms of the overall governance of Aquarian, it's still going to be operating in very much the same way it is right now, and that's very purposeful. We don't want to see anything change, our understanding is you have an excellent relationship right now with Aquarian, and, and we certainly don't want to get in the way of that. What we want to be able to do is be a resource going forward, there's a lot of pieces to this still to happen, there's regulatory approval that needs to happen in, in four states really, Connecticut, but also Massachusetts and New Hampshire, and even Maine has an opportunity to say whether or not this is going to overall affect our operations that we currently have in Maine. All of that's continuing, all of that's ongoing, and this is really just an opportunity for us to sort of say hello, and that's all we're looking to do here, is say, hello, this is us, we're looking forward to serving you, and if you've heard anything about any of this, nothing is changing at all. And that's probably the pretty much message we want to give you, and we really look forward to working with you. I don't know, Joe, if there's anything that I got wrong there and you want to add?
No, excellent job, Alec, thank you. Just, I would reiterate, nothing in the foreseeable future changing, and we're so excited to serve this community.
That last slide we have is a resource for you or for residents within the state. There's not a lot of information on there, it's gonna give some basic information as to what Unitil is, unitil.com/water. As this process unfolds, we'll have updates there. Once we do have any final closing, then, you know, there'll be more information on there in terms of what that involves, if anything is changing, again, nothing will be changing, accounts will be staying the same, all these things, there's nothing that's happening in the short term here. And that's very purposeful, and we're, we're just looking forward to beginning the process of serving. And do you have any questions?
I have a couple. You said nothing was changing, I was curious about staffing, are we, are you gonna keep the same staff? I know, like, you don't have a manager in Millbury, we'd be adding on a manager, or?
No, no changes at this time are planned, Joe, can you confirm that, please?
Yeah, we actually have, I'm sure you're familiar with Paul Drapow, and we did actually recently hire a Massachusetts operations manager, who will be starting to help out in Millbury, and that will be in the middle of October.
Okay, good.
So we're adding staff, nothing changing.
Yeah, all local operations are remaining as they are.
Okay. I'm curious to know about the pump station on Oak Pond Ave, if, do we have any updates on that? I don't know if you can answer that, or?
Not personally directly, John, do you have any information on that?
Sure, I can give you an update. So I'm John Walsh, Vice President of Operations for the company's Massachusetts and New Hampshire subsidiaries, and also for Water Quality and Environmental Management. So in terms of the Oak Pond facility, that's a treatment plant that is being built to treat PFAS, that is in that well water. That facility is well into construction, we expect it to be online toward the end of this year or early next year. That well has been off, not being used since late 2019, and will not come back online until that treatment facility is completed.
Okay, thank you. And I got one more. Could you tell me your present, percentage of your non-revenue water, is that higher or lower, or?
Let's see, non-revenue, the, there's two, two measures of effective leakage, and that's non-revenue water and unaccounted-for water. So unaccounted-for water is the measure that the DEP focuses on, Department of Environmental Protection, and I'll quote that one because I'm, I remember it. So for 2024, for the full year, it was about 14%. But we have done three leak surveys, actually, system-wide leak surveys in town since last October. We have found a number of leaks, and we have fixed nearly all of them, there's a couple small leaks on hydrants that we need to do a little work to fix them, but they're very small, like one gallon per minute. And we're gonna initiate a fourth system-wide survey within the next couple weeks. We're very focused on getting that number of 14% down to what the state DEP's target is, which is 10%.
10%, right. And I just have one more, will Aquarian be hanging around after this sale, or? I mean, they're coming from gas and electricity, do they know much about water? I mean?
I mean, well, that's, that's the whole point. So we have a five-year, five-year agreement, that Aquarian is actively part of the management of the system, which is very purposeful for exactly the reason you're bringing up. Right now, Unitil doesn't have any water assets, we're very much aware of that, that's why we want to have this long runway, so that we can fully understand what we need to understand to be able to continue to provide service. What we know is what we know, we know how to do pipes in the ground, we know the regulatory environment, we know how to provide essential services, we know we don't know everything as well, and that's why this is structured the way it is structured.
Okay, thank you for answering that. Anybody else?
Nope, I had one similar to yours, and he just answered my second one, so.
Thank you, and welcome to town.
I have a question.
Oh, Nick has one, sorry, Nick.
Yeah, I'll just, so thanks for coming tonight, I just have a quick question about what communication channels you plan to use, or if you have a communications manager. There were some, I know transitions and acquisitions can be kind of entangled and difficult, but I know that there was some miscommunication regarding Oak Pond Ave on September 10th about the closures when work was being done. So I'm wondering, do you have management that's in charge of that, and if so, what channels are you using?
All right, so I will, I will try and answer that in two parts. I can talk sort of in a broad sense of what Unitil does logistically in terms of how we use communication channels, but in terms of specific communications involving the current project that you're referring to, I'm gonna defer to John to see if he has any additional knowledge on that specifically. But for Unitil, what we have always believed in is the use of multiple channels, if you look at our social media feed or our website, you're gonna see kind of what we kind of aim to do on terms of how we provide information for our customers, that's both broadly in terms of what's going on in the industry as a whole, as well as if there's more localized projects specific to community projects. I would recommend looking at our channels to just get a broad idea as to what our overall philosophy is. I'm not familiar with specifically what's going on with the project that you're talking about, which is why I'm gonna hand that over to John. John?
Yeah, sure, for Oak Pond, I'm actually not familiar with what happened on September 10th, and I will check with our project team on that, but we use the same multi-channel approach. Our focus is, of course, on disruptions in service to customers, which is typically handled by using our Burst 911 and posting information on our website. We would do the same thing for any road closures, but I need to circle back with our folks and, and ask about what occurred on September 10th.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, I just had a resident reach out about it, so I just, I'd like to get her an answer, so if you can connect with me later, that would be great. The only other question I have as well is, if there isn't, you know, so, just to be clear, I just want to understand, what are the regulatory channels that you have to go through in order to get this acquisition approved? So you're talking about four states, right? Is that going to be going through, which agency is that going to be going through? Or is it going to have to, you know, I'm, I'm just not familiar with how acquisitions work at a state level, only the Fed. So I wasn't sure if you could shed light on that, and then also, what happens if a state denies it? Is there a game plan there?
Sure, well, I think effectively, and Joe will correct me if I get anything wrong, because as I drift into the world of regulatory, that's where I, I start to lose, lose runway. But in each state, the public utilities are all governed by a regulatory body that is, the name varies by state, but it's a Public Utilities Commission. In Massachusetts specifically, it's the Department of Public Utilities, in New Hampshire and Maine, it's the Public Utilities Commission, in Connecticut, it is PURA, Public, I'm not gonna try that one, but I know what it is. Effectively, in each case, the regulatory body is reviewing the overall agreement, and what they have to do is make a determine as to whether or not this agreement is in the interest of the customers that are being served by the utility. So they review that, they ultimately have final say as to whether or not something like this goes forward. Our expectation is, we're gonna be working with all those regulators, and we want to make sure the questions that they have are satisfied. So that, that's ultimately the process as I understand it, I don't know if I'm missing any steps on that, Joe.
No, I would just add, it's a very thorough process, there's thousands of questions of discovery that are asked in these jurisdictions. So it's, it's a very deliberate and thoughtful process, and, you know, it will take a little time, we're thinking this will be something that happens, you know, at the end of 2025 for the closing and for our orders from these commissions that approve these things. So again, we, you know, we have to get, you know, authority and permission to do pretty much everything in our, in our, in our companies and our worlds.
And that's not atypical for everything we do, you know, everything we do, and on the electric side of our business and on the natural gas side of the business, pretty much anything we do in terms of our operations, we have to seek approval from the regulators, the Department of Public Utilities in Massachusetts, and they review and approve, again, making sure that anything we're doing is considered prudent and in the interest of our customers.
Okay, excellent, thank you, I appreciate your time.
I have one more question. Katie and I sat on, the Aquarian used to have a citizens, I called it a citizens' action group. It was very enjoyable till COVID hit, and I was curious to know if you would bring something like that back in. We had quarterly meetings, it was very interesting, I learned a lot about water going to those meetings, so, just a, was a citizens' group, so.
Sounds very interesting, I mean, we're doing a lot of these meetings with some of the other communities, both in New Hampshire and Massachusetts, we're hearing about various things that are happening, you know, and various communications that happen in those committees. I was meeting with Hampton, New Hampshire just a few weeks ago, and they talked about how they had regular quarterly meetings within that community in terms of talking about, just getting updates as well. So I mean, I, I'm happy to continue that conversation, if there's something that you feel is providing helpful input, you know, we want to hear about that. My team specifically, our role is to be a resource for folks who are sitting in your position, members of boards of selectmen, people that want to have a resource, you know, our operations folks, they're gonna be working with your department heads, and they're gonna be taking care of day-to-day operations. If there's things that you or other members of your board need above and beyond that, that's where our folks come in. And Arianna, who's on this call, she manages those relationships a lot for our Massachusetts communities, I expect that you and her, or whoever is in your position, is going to be in direct communication with her on a lot of these things.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, thanks.
Bye.
Okay. New Business One, call a special election for November 18th, 2025, and vote on approval of the debt exclusion question. Jane, you wanna come up and read every article?
So.
Oh, wait, that's the special election first, then the warrant.
Special election first. So you do have the motion in front of you to call for the special election for November 18th, so that needs to be done first.
We gotta find the motion.
It is MB. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, all right, I'd like to make a motion, first motion, to call a special election on November 18th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Millbury Memorial Junior/Senior High School regarding a debt exclusion question, school roof slash HVAC, and installation of solar panel array.
And I would second that, and I would say that, if I'm not mistaken, information has been put on the website as to the presentation that was in front of that joint meeting for, for people to look into.
I mean, not Vertex, sorry.
Not Vertex, but the, yes, from Terva.
My apologies, wrong company.
Okay, I got a motion in a second, Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so you wanna read the second motion?
Sure. Like, I'd like to make a motion, the second motion right here, to accept the debt exclusion question as it reads below, for the special election on November 18th, 2025. Question one, read the whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. Shall the town of Millbury be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One and a Half, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to replace the junior/senior high school roof in HVAC equipment, replace the Elmwood Street Elementary School roof in HVAC equipment, and install a rooftop solar panel array at the junior/senior high school and at the Elmwood Street School, including design, engineering, permitting, equipping, accusation, and any costs related or incidental thereto?
I would second that.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you very much, I will have a ton of dates for you to read at the next meeting. Thank you for that, thanks.
Okay, first reading of the cannabis social equity policy.
So, last, I'm sorry.
Do the chair, I think now, I think our next new business.
Oh, wait, I forgot to close and approve the special town, geez, oh, I told you I was gonna jump around the agenda.
Fair, fair, that's fair.
But we'll go, we'll close and approve the special town meeting warrant for November 4th. Sorry, Jane.
No, you're fine, you did say you were gonna jump around, so I figured maybe you did.
That was, that was my excuse.
So we're specifically here for you to look at the warrant, approve it, close it, and then approve it, and then I have it for you to sign.
I mean, I would be prepared to make a motion or two, I just, I'll reserve time in case anybody had any questions or comments they wanted to make before any motions were made on the board. Or, Nick, if you're over on Zoom, I know it's just tough not seeing you here, I just didn't want to cut in front of you if you had a comment or concern.
Thank you, I, I don't see any, it looks good to me.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
First.
First.
Correct.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay.
And then I'll immediately jump in and make another motion to approve the special town meeting warrant for November 4th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Do we need a special pen? No.
Oh.
I know, I don't have a, I was just writing, I have a blue one. All right, now, we will go to the first reading of the cannabis social equity policy.
Okay, so, the last meeting we had, I believe it was, I had brought forward that the Cannabis Commission had been in touch and said that they hadn't heard back from the town in regards to the social equity policy. So at the last meeting, I brought it forward, shared some communications from the Cannabis Commission, and there was, I think, a decision, or kind of group decision, to look at the Shrewsbury Social Equity Policy that had been included as a template, so I had asked Amy to put it on our letterhead. We've looked at it several times, we did add a few more definitions in there, I know that Selectman Lazaro had had a question specifically about the definition of social equity, and I did reach out to a few different people at the Cannabis Commission, specifically their equity team, to get an actual definition, and they don't have one. So I don't really feel comfortable creating that on my own, but I, I know that there's a lot of other definitions in here, sort of, that are tentacles around that, you know, how one would actually. how one would actually qualify and, you know, some of those factors. So those, you know, what, Shrewsbury had some of them. I think there was one that wasn't in there. They basically copied and pasted some of the things from Shrewsbury and other places, and then I had Amy drop them in, but there's not an actual definition of social equity. But this is what Shrewsbury did, and this is what they put forward. So that's what you have in front of you is just the draft for the first reading to see how you feel about it, if you have any questions or concerns that I can take back to the commission qualifying, clarifying information, what have you. So that's what's in SharePoint before you right now.
And this is something we have to do, right?
I don't think the penalties have a lot of teeth because that's what town council said, but we can either take it up now or we could take it up if we had a business, a Cannabis Commission, that was in this particular group or category, if you will, really like saying it that way, but so I think it's just either we do it now or we do it later, but they definitely flagged it for me that we hadn't done it yet.
So just under the definitions, under area of disproportionate impact, she's going to change that to the town of Milbury, not Shrewsbury?
Right.
Thanks for catching.
Yeah. See, I do read. I'm surprised they don't have women in there because that was a big, when it first came out, you know, woman.
And we do have one establishment that meets the women-owned definition. If anybody sees anything else that says Shrewsbury or any other town, please let me know because we did look at it a bunch of times. We tried to catch them all. Yes.
I'm okay with the first reading. Everybody all set?
No, I have a couple of questions on additional criteria. At least 51% of current employees or subcontractors reside in the areas disproportionate impact by the first day of business, and the ratio will or will meet or exceed 75%. I guess 75% of what? And then I don't agree with subcontractors being included. So subcontractors can often be miscategorize employees a lot of the time in order for businesses to not have to pay employment tax. So I would strike that in the policy. That's just my opinion. That's under Section B on additional criteria. And I can see that being a way for, if you want this to be a solid policy, I could see that being a problem, where people can just load up on subcontractors and say, oh, my plumbing guy from my business, yeah, he's from, he's from Lemonster, I don't know, or he's from Milbury. Like, you know, it's, I would tend to disagree because if you want people who are employed in town to be included in that and to make sure that these businesses are hiring people in town, I think that's really important to me.
So I actually kind of agree with you and in a backwards way, disagree, Selectman Lazaro, in that I think, I think you're definitely right when you're talking about the employer, employee taxes and those types of things that people were used to skirt it. What I actually didn't mind about this is I just, I guess principally, I intend to disagree with these types of policies getting enacted. I think it's actually restrictive to people than, than doing what it's seeking to do. So I actually view this as a way with which people would be able to have a chance at starting this business by not falling directly themselves in this boxes that we had here in the spot above it, you know? Let that a majority, more than 50% of ownership is made up of individuals from Black, African-American, Hispanic, or Latino descent. I, again, I don't want to get too far down the politics of this while we're talking here as a group, but I just, from a fundamental standpoint, I tend to not agree with these things. I don't love this idea that we're forced to have to do this anyways. I think this is being very restrictive on who can do business here, and I hate that for myself, so.
I do, too. That's why I asked if we had to do it.
Yeah, so I mean, and I don't mean that, Nick, in a way to say that I think you are right for the reasons you have. I just coincidentally happen to view that additional criteria in a positive way because I already feel as though it's being restrictive in another way, if that makes any sense at all. So it's a polite disagreement with you, is what I'm getting at.
No, I would, I would agree with you. I, I'm just, my idea here is that if we have to do it, then do it that way so that you actually have more of a policy, but I would prefer not to do it, to be quite honest. I would prefer this to be an economic equity act where you're trying to focus more on reducing barriers to doing business in town, not adding tons of hoops for people to jump through. And I'm still unclear about what 75% means of a ratio. Like, is that referring, like, I was curious on that because I scrolled through this and I'm not 100%. And then the other thing I disagree with that I would agree with you on is, again, like, the definitions are really, like, kind of vague in some ways. And I don't, I don't know. I think that it's really tough to get into the business of telling people who can start a business and who can't. It's really, really not I feel like my place to do that, or I just don't feel right doing that. I think that judging a business on the merits of how they conduct themselves as a person of doing business is kind of the way to look at it. If we have a, if we have someone with a rocky track record of doing business and shady LLCs and people who don't pay their property taxes or their water bills, then yeah, we have a problem with that. You're not going to be able to own another business in town. But I think for me, that's kind of the concern I draw, is that it's kind of putting us in a position to tell people who and what can do business in town and not really going off of a track record of doing business, like having, you know, a certificate of good standing, having liability insurance, paying your bills, paying your taxes, like, none of that's, you know, kind of included. And that's not what a social equity policy is meant to do, but I think what concerns me is that I'm, I'm just going to speak freely here, is that I'm concerned that there's someone who could see this policy as written and then launch something against the town and then say, well, this is reverse, this is a reverse discrimination. So that's the number one thing that came to my mind when reading this policy from the state. And again, it's mass general law, so that's why I was looking for, you know, like, is there a way for us to water down the definition of social equity? Can we change it to economic equity so that we don't put ourselves into the crossroads of someone making those claims against the town and putting us in jeopardy here? So that's where my comments stem, and I agree with you, Brian, so. But it's just, it's a weird, I've never heard of such a thing, so.
I can say a little bit more if you'd like, but I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I was going to agree with these folks and say, I don't like it either, so I went back to the prior meeting to look and see what the heck we're doing because I kind of, you know, I forgot, it was a couple of weeks ago, so. So it's something we have to do, is what it looks like. It's part of the Cannabis Host Community Agreement statute that was amended in 2022. So we can either adopt a compliant homegrown bylaw.
I have it right here, too.
Oh, sorry, so we're thinking alike here.
Yes, we are.
And I think we decided the last meeting that a bylaw is a bit much and that, you know, we could have this approval process, which we were kind of going forward with, based on what Shrewsbury had.
Right, so if I, I'll just add a teeny bit more. So that's where the Shrewsbury template came forward because council recommended to any of the communities that they're serving that we opted for this third option, which was create a local approval process for equity applicants administered on a one-to-one basis, where a non-equity cannabis applicant may be approved only after a qualifying social equity business has commenced operations until such time as 50% of the licensees operating the town are social equity businesses. And then, of course, I said, what's the penalty if we don't do this? So the penalty that may be imposed by the Cannabis Commission for noncompliance with social equity standards is a fine equal to the total community impact fees received by the community in the last calendar year, since at this point, most communities no longer impose impact fees or have not collected any such fees after most operators stopped paying them in 2022. The penalty has dull teeth.
Okay.
So you could do this, or we could just wait and see if we have an applicant and deal with it at that time.
I like to wait and see.
Yeah.
And at least we have a draft pretty close ready to go so that we're not scrambling.
But I feel like, you know, I had copied Selectman Lazaro on the communication to the Cannabis Commission, and, you know, he also kind of added a couple of things, and really, we just got back definitions, but the one that we really wanted wasn't even available. And I don't want to, I'm not going to, none of us would write what we, what we think is in their minds about this whole program.
Right.
So we, it doesn't really sound like there's much teeth to it, and obviously, we could revisit it if we had an applicant.
Right. Let's hold it off for.
Kind of sounds like that's how everyone feels.
See what happens.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
I would be okay with that.
It's okay with me.
Do you need a motion to table?
No, I'm just going to table, right? I don't think I need a motion to table, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the feedback. I appreciate it. So we'll just hold.
Okay, second reading of the employee handbook. Did everybody read it a second time?
I know I went back and looked at, I got some feedback.
Yes.
Related to my question.
Yes.
And I think it was, was the language seemed like it had changed?
It was clarified a little bit more to make it more understandable. I spoke to Sharon Siegel as recent as today, and she just wanted to clarify that. Were you on sick time or vacation time? I forget which one we were talking about.
It was the clawback one.
So what would happen is employees would need to sign a payroll deduction authorization in order to take back sick and vacation time that has been used but not earned. So this would happen at the time of separation from employment. So what we did was we cleaned up that language a little bit. She redlined it. I can send that back to all of you again tomorrow so that if you have any questions before the third reading, we can get those answered. But she did do some work to just clarify that.
Yeah, I think what I read, it made some more sense where there was a form in place and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I, I didn't know how that, that would work and if, if it was legal. So having it go through legal was, yeah, important to know.
Any unearned portion of the front-loaded vacation leave or sick will not be included in the final payout unless otherwise required by law. At the time of separation, if the employee has taken vacation leave that was not yet accrued, any such used but not accrued vacation leave will be deducted from the final pay, provided that such adjustment will not result in reduction of the gross amount of any final pay below applicable, I need my glasses.
Minimum wage, yeah.
Legally mandated minimum wage, yes. So I think it clarified it more, but I can send it to all of you so you can take one more look at it before the third reading.
Yeah, I think what, the, I don't know that the wording had, like, it was very clear about this is time that was unearned, so therefore, if it's unearned, it's not obligated to the employee. So I think those words, whether they were in there before, but they at least stood out to me now that that made more sense.
Right, she clarified accrued versus unused.
Yeah.
If you will, yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay, I'll send that tomorrow and we'll just get it, one clean version over to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, management update.
Matt Stensel on there earlier. So just personnel, I just want to welcome Max Martell, who started yesterday, and he is in the booth with Kevin, so. Yay, welcome. Very excited to have you here. Also, Danielle Combs has been hired as the new office assistant for the building department. She'll be starting on the 30th, and we, the individual who had that position moved on to town of Westboro, supporting their town manager right in the office. So we're, big loss for us, but huge opportunity for Amanda, and we wish her all the best. The cable services assistant, the part-time position, I think we're going to try to post that this week. Kevin Nod. Okay.
Kevin Nod.
I'm looking at him. I'm getting work done while we're live. I just wanted to just touch base about Wheelock Bridge Construction. So I know that there's been a lot of angst about getting that done over the last 10 years. Now it's being worked on, and I know that the last couple of days have been very frustrating and challenging for folks. I spent a lot of time over the last two days talking, actually since the end of last week, talking about this project with the chief of police and also with the director of DPW. Spent some time talking with them last night and the complaints that were coming in through dispatch. I do know that DPW and the chief of police were out there this morning, just sort of reassessing signage. I do have an update from the DPW director about some of the things they did today, placing a bridge closed and a detour sign at Oak Pond Ave. They're going to gather some dead-end signs for Lakeview, Cristo, and Ringe, or will order them if needed. The contractor put some more bridge closed signs between Oak Pond and the bridge, and the contractor mentioned he had some flashing lights to put on the barricades. If they don't have enough, then DPW will get more. So I think that is a bad spot, and they tried, you know, these, I'm not usually involved in the nitty-gritty of detours. I mean, that's above, beyond something, that's not my expertise, and it sounds like this was all talked about, I think, when our former DPW director was here. You know, these projects take years to get off the ground. You know, we've had some staff changes, and I think some of it just might be communication or just kind of reassessing when we get this feedback. So I just want at least the residents who have called or I'm sure Facebooked about this to know that we hear you, we understand this is super frustrating. I also want to thank Jude Cristo, who provided a lengthy list of suggestions on how to mitigate some of this and lives over there and offered to sort of be our eyes on there, which is probably a double-edged sword, Jude, if you're listening, but I do love you and appreciate that. But we're just asking people to try to be patient. People have to just get used to the new, but, you know, we know it's a pain. But in the end, my hope is that it will be fabulous and we can check that off.
I'm guessing you had the opposite issue this last couple of days than I had over the weekend when my dad said, you didn't go over Wheelock, did you? I said, I sure did. I said, that's Monday, but the signs were down, so he was already detoring himself. Oh, on Saturday.
That wasn't happening too much last night. Matt says Liz on now if anybody has questions.
Oh. Matt, well, Mary threw you. Do you want Matt to?
Sure, if he wants to speak.
Matt, do you have anything you want to add? I don't want to speak for you, but I know there was a lot of, like, conversations and trying to correct a lot of this today.
Yeah, just, a lot of it was kind of expected because that's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough detour on the East Milbury side, and so it's, and a lot of people just like to see it for themselves, sort of. They, they need to see the disruption, you know, and that's, and on the other side, it's not a problem because there's an easy turn and you can see the work is going on. So, you know, it's been pretty smooth on that side, but I think once the local people get it, and we did notify a few of the apps, you know, that you use for navigation, so I think in a few days of it, we should be good. It should be calmed down, and a couple of months and they'll be out of there and the bridge will be replaced and we'll be good.
Yeah.
Matt, I just want to thank you because I know that, you know, you inherited this project, if you will, and there's a lot of moving parts, and I just want to thank you for being responsive and also want to thank Chief Lewis. You know, we're trying to make as many. You know, we're trying to make as many adjustments as we can on the fly to try to make it as easy as we can for folks. So again, I just want to take a minute just to pause and say, we know that people are frustrated, um, and we're trying to make adjustments. And hopefully this will be done sooner rather than later and we move on to another bridge project. But Matt, is there anything else you wanted to add? Or I, I don't know if you were on earlier. I kind of went through some of the notes that you shared with me about the different signs that you put up or are gonna get.
Yeah, we, I mean, the engineers draw up a plan of signage and they, and the contractor puts it up, but they're not necessarily, uh, local people, they're not necessarily onsite. So we made a few adjustments and the contractor was really good that they had some extra signs. We had some different signs and, um, we're still working on a couple of things just to, you know, make it work on the, kind of on the fly, on the scene. So, um, what the engineers had kind of put together was good on paper, let's say that. But it didn't work as well as it could have, so we kind of adjusted it and, and were trying to make it a little bit better for people.
Well, thank you again, Matt. I appreciate everything that you're doing to try to, and thank you for jumping on Zoom and speaking to it.
Oh, no problem.
Does anybody have any other thoughts or questions on Wheelock? You want to just move past? Moving on.
I have one more question, sorry. I just have a quick question about, um, trucking routes. So I know a lot of trucks are going to Route 20. And I'm, one of the concerns I've heard is some of them are trying to turn around, um, or they weren't made aware. Is there an online resource so that if we have businesses that are doing business on Route 20, that they can see a map of like, oh, you can't, obviously I just looked on Apple Maps and Google, shows it's closed, which is great. But I was wondering if the town has published anything as well. I, I think they have, but I just wanted to verify that.
I'm not sure where we.
The whole page, I've seen the whole page for the bridge project. I just wanted to make sure that like.
And I did, I did, I didn't hear back from Apple. I did from Google and Waze that they accepted my edit. I didn't post anything. A lot of it's up to the individual drivers, unfortunately, in the, you know, and seeing the signage. That's why the detour was put all the way out on 122 at first. But of course, a lot of the local people, you know, are gonna use Oak Pond, so we put some signage there too, to try to keep the people. I mean, the trucks really should be going on 122 to Route 20 to Milbury Ave anyways.
Right, they shouldn't be.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't be going over Wheelock anyways, not really set for trucks. And neither is Oak Pond, but, um, we know that's not always the case. Sometimes they take the shortest, shortest distances. But no, I don't, I, we don't have like a map for anyone to look. I, I don't think we have anything that we can post on the website. I mean, we probably could. I can, we can come up with something.
I think a detour map might be helpful. Um, I know it's just good to cover bases, but I, that's the only feedback I've gotten and I appreciate all the work you've done. I think it's, it's on Apple, so I mean, it's on Google, it's on Waze, you've done the outreach, so. You know, and people know, so. And it's, also, it's so long overdue. I was joking with my family. I'm like, I think that bridge in that cone has been there since I got my learner's permit. And I'm almost five, so.
Yes, it has.
Do it that as you will.
It's been a long time. It's been a long time coming, so.
Awesome. Thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. I'm keep, I'm moving along. So, um, also just wanted to give a shout out to the Inspector General who came to visit. He does a listening tour. He, his name is Jeff Shapiro and, um, he spends about a third of his time every week going out to the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts and, um, just getting to know people and understanding what the issues are. I just want to thank some of our staff that, you know, took a minute to just stop in and meet with him. I also want to thank Selectman McKenna for joining us. And it was just a really great conversation, learning about what his office does. It's really around fraud. So I was happy to meet him now on this end. But like tremendous resource, super friendly, super user-friendly. Um, and we talked just about all the requirements for procurement. And I may have hinted, um, that it would be great if, um, there was grant funding or some opportunity to get a procurement officer. He wrote it down. He didn't say no. I wanted to give a thank you to Ron and Denise Marlborough. They sponsored today's pizza party, um, for the seniors under the tent over Asa Water Mansion. I just really want to applaud Lori and Josh and the awesome team at the Senior Center for just continuing to be creative and find spaces and places for the seniors to do things while this construction is happening. There was a fall flower arrangement class that happened in here last week, heavy on the golden rod. But really fun to see people here and participating. But, um, I just really, again, I want to thank Denise and Ron for all they do, um, for the town and for the seniors. And, you know, I'm sure it was a couple of hundred bucks they spent, um, to fund the pizza party. And also Senator Moore came with Doreen and some unbelievable dessert that was brought to me. So I just want to acknowledge that. I'm not gonna get into all the details on the Senior Center construction update, but things are moving along. There was, once the insulation was removed, the water leak was deemed to be way worse than what was originally thought. So that's why there's now an article on the warrant, um, for some additional funding because we have to repair the leak before we put new insulation. We are hoping or anticipating we might get some state funds to help with that, but we don't know, um, just yet. It's a timing issue. Um, but there's a lot of work going on over there. Probably not gonna be open again until December. So again, Lori and her team are doing what they can, pop-up food pantries, you know, bingo over at Care One. I think they're just doing the best that they can and all with a good sense of humor. Operations update at the Senior Center, I do want to mention about fuel assistance. Lori indicated that the first round of renewal applications for fuel assistance had been mailed out by Worcester Community Action Council and with staffing cuts at that organization and anticipated funding reductions. Lori's expecting a very busy season at the Senior Center with helping out and trying to help people figure out, how they're gonna pay for the fuel that they need to keep their house warm. Appointments are gonna be handled at the fire station, which is where Lori and her team are operating out of. And we appreciate, um, the hospitality that the fire department is showing us at this time. It's gonna be a tough winter for a lot of people and funding cuts only increase the pressure on local services. So, um, this is all real. This is what we're seeing across the country. And I'm happy that, you know, Lori's talking about it and trying to be as proactive, um, as possible. Old Fire Department Headquarters, we tried a couple of Saturdays ago to have a robust yard sale. We had a few people come in. We had a lovely 90-year-old woman who I ended up having a coffee and a donut with, who volunteers with Meals on Wheels, and she took a chair. So it was big doings. But, um, we were really excited because, um, we were able to, uh, the remaining items were given to the North Brookfield Fire Department. They recently refurbished their old DPW barn to be their new station, and they didn't have any funds for furniture. So it wasn't the best, but they came and got it and loaded up their trucks. And I feel really excited that it didn't go in the dump.
Right.
Um, and that we can help out another fire department. I'm not sure if this is in Dates to Remember or whatever, but I'll just say it here as well. Board of Health is having a flu shot clinic. It's gonna be open to all town employees and the public, October 9th from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Mill Church. I also want to give a shout out to Pastor Ed because he helps us with everything. Folks can register with Julie Van Arzelen, who's the Director of Public Health, or Josh Ryan through the Senior Center, through the Fire Department. And, um, would you like to say a couple of words, um, Madam Clerk, about Student Government Day? And then I have an appointment. Do not let me forget. Thank you. I see you giving me the eyes. It's telepathic.
Poor Georgia.
I know, sorry, Georgia.
So again, we will have Student Government Day. It's gonna be on November 3rd, the day before the special town meeting, so you won't forget it. It's a great day. Obviously, Mr. Lazaro knows about Student Government Day as he was one of ours and, uh, was in the Treasurer Collector's Office for many years, and then now he's on the Board of Selectmen. Um, and I believe that we have some gentlemen who work for the Parks Department now, who were actually in Student Government Day back, back in the 17, 2017, 2018. So that's a good thing. And we've had interns come from that. So I know it's gonna be a very exciting day. What happens is the high school will take the list of names of our department heads. They run an election for them. They get elected. They'll come in on November 3rd that morning. The person who is the town clerk will swear everybody in. They will go to their prospective departments, um, work for a few hours with us, and then we go back and we have a nice luncheon for all of the children and they get gift, uh, gift certificates.
Certificate.
I want to be one of those kids.
They're all gonna be like, where's our gift certificate?
Jane, you're very generous.
There's going to be I-voted stickers that they get. They get a certificate of achievement.
It's been a long day, Jane, it's okay. We know where you're going.
A certificate of achievement for that day. So if you can all make it, that would be fabulous. Any questions?
I have a comment though. I mean, they've had Student Government Day going back to when I was in school.
Right. It's been a long, long time.
Because I think there are those in classes, either in my class or around me, that had parents that worked here. So they, of course, got the highway surveyor and town clerk positions, but.
Yeah, Katie's much younger than me, so, yeah.
Much, oh yeah, much, right.
Any other questions?
I only have a comment, and if you ever need any help in the planning process, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm more than happy to support in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, I am appointing Georgia Moyer to the Commission on Disabilities. Thank you. Sorry you had to wait an hour and a half for the ta-da. I feel like we should have confetti or something for you, but.
Cake.
Thank you for stepping up.
Cake would have been nice.
Mary has orange slices.
Flowerless cake, sugarless cake.
Georgia, thank you for your willingness to serve. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? You want to go up to the mic? Anything, you're good? I feel like we could, we just could at least offer you some airtime, pre-airtime, if you want to.
She got it right now.
I just want to be useful.
Oh, we're glad you stepped up.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Any questions?
I have one quick question, um, for the town manager, um, regarding, um, oh my God, my brain just froze. Oh my gosh.
Don't worry, it happens to me several times.
No, I'm like, I was like, I've been chewing on this question for like an hour and I'm like, what the heck? Why do I not remember it? Obviously, it wasn't that important. I'll send you an email.
Okay, very good. You let me off the hook easy on that one.
Anybody else? Good, no?
Negative.
Review and approve previous minutes, minutes of August 12th, 2025.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2025.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you. I only have to say one, Brian. Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And we just have to do this all the time.
Oh, this, this is during the.
Days to remember? Do you have those, Nick, or?
I do. I have them on SharePoint, so I can definitely kick that off. Let me just make sure I have the right day so that we're not reading old stuff. The first one I can start with is, um, there is a local author expo taking place at the Milbury Public Library from, uh, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Saturday, September 27th, so that's coming up. There's gonna be 10 local authors from various subjects. If you have any questions, it's free entry. You can email the milburylibaryfriends@gmail.com, um, and come out and support local authors. I know there's gonna be a few children, authors, and some young people that have written books. And, um, it should be a really great day for your friends and family. Oh, perfect, here it is. Additionally, uh, the day after that, September 28th, is a proclamation, is a Massachusetts Good Neighbor Day. This is a proclamation from Governor Moore Healy. And the Asa Waters Mansion will be having a celebration to commemorate the day, full of family fun. So please be sure to check that out, um, and there will be more details to come on that. Additionally, um, let's see what the next one is. September 27th, so that's Saturday, there's a flea market and craft fair at the first, Milbury First Congregational Church, 148 West Main Street, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. For information, please call 508-865-5371. So a lot of stuff coming up next weekend. There's a flu clinic for the Milbury Board of Health, Thursday, October 9th, 2025, from 9:00 AM until 10:30 AM, uh, at the Mill Church, 45 River Street. Bring all insurance cards, glasses if needed, and wear a short-sleeved shirt. To sign up, uh, you can click the link below, um, or call 508-865-9154, the Milbury Senior Center. Citizens Academy update. Thank you to everyone who applied for the Fall Citizens Academy. While we didn't receive enough applications for the fall, there will be one in the spring. The application deadline is January 30th, 2026, at noon. Visit the milburyma.gov website, um, and watch for updates on this channel. Okay. The First Annual Car Show and Touch a Truck is taking place Saturday, the 27th, at 10:00 AM until 4 o'clock. All trucks and cars are welcome. Meet the Milbury Fire Department, explore the trucks and cars at Milbury High School, 12 Martin Street. So a lot of, again, a lot of stuff this weekend. It's exciting. And then there's a 20% off back to food, uh, back, 20% off food sales for, uh, the Friends of the Milbury Public Library, uh, taking place. If you display this flyer on October 15th, 2025, you can order online and follow the instructions. And then we have a letter, and I can read that if you'd like. Or do you want me to, I can hold on that until we're ready for letters.
Okay, on the Good Neighbor Dinner, if anybody would care to join me to present some citations to, and all the nominees, I would appreciate it. So just let me know and.
I'm signed up for the dinner.
You did sign up? Okay, good. I'll tell Juliet Marie I'm gonna be there too. Okay.
And the breakfast.
I'll, I could probably make the breakfast too. I forgot about breakfast.
At least my health is back by then I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be volunteering.
Okay, Roundtable Discussion and Citizens Feedback, limited to three minutes. Discussion on Agenda Items heard at this meeting only. Okay, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Hey, Mary. Um, I just have a question.
Could you state your name and?
I'm sorry, Steve Sterns, Thomas Hill Road. I have a question on new business, one, just a clarifying question, on the debt exclusion question. Will that be a, and this may be a question that Jane can answer. Is that going to have like, um, on the ballot, the pros and cons like other things do on like statewide ballots and so forth?
So Steve, we'll have explanations, um, about what a debt exclusion question is. It's a yes or no. It's specifically not, um, reversed, like some questions are. It's a yes if you want to put it through, it's a no if you don't. But we will have explanations, but because I just called it, I'll be doing that this week and getting it out.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
I have one thing for Citizens Feedback, mainly because I forgot my comment from earlier.
Go ahead.
Also, okay, um, so my only question is to, um, the town manager regarding the Senior Center, um, construction. Given the weak, um, and some of the hurdles that we're starting to see, um, will. will the contractors involved have an updated timeline on that? Or will the director have that updated timeline for you to share with us at an upcoming meeting? I just know there's some residents I've been bumping into that are eager to get back in. They love it there and they want to, they want to get back. And I know that they're really, you know, stuck between a hard place and, and necessary renovations. But I just figured I would ask that and see if we can have an update.
Sure. Through the chair, December is the updated timeline. And I know that Mark Hollis and Lori Keefe are meeting with the contractors and everybody who's involved every week, either onsite or, and also Caleb Moody, our building inspector, like there's a whole team. And they're either getting updates by email or they're meeting onsite. So we know that many seniors who utilize the center are anxious about getting back in there for a lot of reasons, and we understand. So communication about what's happening is priority for us. So definitely we'll continue to keep, you know, and through different channels, everyone updated on if there's any more delays or hopefully we can get back in there sooner or anything else they might uncover. But we'll definitely continue to keep everybody updated.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay. Mail? No mail? No one's to give us any money this.
We do have mail.
Oh, you do?
I do, I do. All right, let me pull that up.
I didn't see any mail.
All right, to whom it may concern. I am writing to you today on behalf of the Cub Scout PAC 109 in Milbury. We're a dedicated group of young boys and girls who are passionate about community service and making a positive impact in our town. We're currently working towards a special project that we believe will be important for honoring and remembering the brave police officers who have served our community. Our goal is to raise funds for memorial markers with flags that will be placed on their graves in local cemeteries. In order to make this happen, we need your support. We're aiming to raise $3,000 by November 15th. And every contribution, big, small, will make a difference. Your generosity will directly help us purchase the markers, flags, and bring us closer to our goal. We kindly ask you to consider putting donation jugs in your establishments or donating an item in your upcoming silent auction, November 7th, at the VFW at Milbury. Your support will help us to honor these brave, brave officers, but will also serve as a valuable lesson for Cub Scouts about the importance of giving back to our community. We believe that we can achieve anything. Thank you for your time to read this request and for being a part of the Cub Scouts community. We're grateful for the opportunity and grateful for any support you can provide. If you have any further questions or you'd like to discuss further, please do not hesitate to contact us. Sincerely, Karen Dupree, Committee Chair for the Cub Scout PAC 109 in Milbury. If you, so that's a letter that she has sent to the board.
Okay. On a good note, community events and positive stories about Milbury. I can't believe I don't have anything tonight.
I got nothing.
You will after this weekend.
Yes, you will.
I did play golf.
There we go.
I beat Scott again this year, but he won more raffles than me, so. It was for the St. Vincent de Paul food pantry.
Oh, nice.
It was a beautiful day. That's about it.
I hear nothing else. I'll make a, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Brian? Brian?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.